Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. I see a few people still coming in. Wait one moment here. Lobby is clear, thank you. We request that all electronic devices be turned off and put in the silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome you to the September 6, 2023, School Board Meeting. The time is 6:01 PM and this meeting is called to order. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, public comment, consent, action items, which include two items under Board Office, ten items under academic services, two items under human resources, five items under operations, and one item under unfinished business tabled items, and four items under the good of the order other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion to adopt the agenda.
Ms. Lunkford Fleming makes the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Jordan? You would please record your vote. The motion to approve the agenda passes 7-0. As is accustomed to the board, Mrs. Giavennelli will lead us in the invocation. Afterward, Mr. Fisher will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Antonette An-tastashi. Am I saying it right?
Yes, where is that?
Ah, Gasper An-tastashi is founder, a pastor of the Word of Life Church and the New Life Dream Center, a 12-month residential substance abuse program for men and women, just celebrating 40 years. International speaker and author, Gasper founded the Southwest Florida Regional Pastors and Marketplace Leaders, uniting the Southwest Florida region to take a stand for moral issues our nation is facing today. Host of CTN TV program Untwisted, he and his guests bring newsworthy truth for a moral awakening. Gasper is also a founder of Breaking Free Living Well Counseling Center. He holds a doctorate in theology and Christian counseling and a member of the National Christian Counselors Association. Gasper established covenant with Israel with the original Jewish federations to build a bridge of friendship with the evangelical and Jewish community. In 2009, Gasper An-tastashi was recognized by the Lee County Board of County Commissioners for contributing a better quality of life for the citizens of Lee County and for his continued community efforts. He and his wife Michelle of 50 years do marriage counseling, coaching, leading a weekly marriage mentorship group bringing restoration to marriages and families. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads as I humble myself and we all humble ourselves in the mighty hand of God. Father, we're so grateful that your presence is in this place where two of us, three of us are gathered together, you're in the midst of us. And as you guide our school board and our superintendent to make right decisions for our children, we thank you for the Holy Spirit's wisdom that will be poured out in their lives. We want to repent, Father, for taking the Bible out of the schools and the prayer out of schools in 1963. We ask you to forgive us for not standing up stronger against that. And since that time, Father, we have seen so much devastation and darkness within our school system and in our church and in our culture. But Lord, we come and ask forgiveness and receive that, and we thank you for this board that has a heart to want to serve you, to be a tool in your hand, to make the quality of education lined up with your heart and your will. We thank you for that. We thank you that in the midst of all the darkness that we're facing today, that your light will never fail, that you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. So, Lord, empower every member here that's on this dais, empower our superintendent. Give them the courage to stand for the truth. And there is only one truth, and that is your living word. We pray, Father, for every one of them and their families and all that they do, that you protect them and provide for them. In this meeting, Lord, you take charge of this. Let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And we want to give you all the glory and honor for what's about to happen in this season of our school and, Father, in this region, that we'll be an example to others in other parts of America. We thank you for that. And we say, Lord, have your way in the name of Jesus. And everybody say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The character word for September is acceptance. Acceptance is defined as the recognition of the diversity of others, their opinions, practices, and culture with a favorable reception. Quote, "Strength lies in differences, not similarities," by Stephen Covey. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Destine Christina, an 11th grade student at Lee High Senior High School. The acknowledgements for the month of September, September is National Payroll Week is September 5 through 9, 2023. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September 17, 2023. Do the Right Thing for the Month is September 1 through 30, the whole month, and National Hispanic Heritage Months, September 15 through October 15, 2023. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Attorney DuPape Bruno, would you please address the item of public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are 11 individuals that would like to speak this evening, so the time per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you. Please ensure that you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is our public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff to follow up. The cards are located with the staff. At this time, it'd be at the dais to my right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? One person? If you'll please go. Attorney DuPape Bruno, would you please proceed with public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Patrick Finkler, Jessie Smith, Madeline Stewart, Todd Duzenberry, Robert Daniels.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Finkler. First, I wanted to thank Commissioner Fisher for responding and acknowledging my email. I very much appreciate that. I also wanted to thank the board for pulling the vote on Phase 1 of High School NNN from this evening's agenda. I believe that delaying this vote until you've had the chance to visit Elba and hear from the residents is the right decision. I know I look forward to the presentation and interaction with the board and administration representatives. Second, it has been stated over the last several meetings that there are potential needs for new facilities or improvements to existing facilities. However, this is where I disagree with several steps in the facility development process, as well as the continued lack of discussion on overspending for current projects. First, I believe that in the facility development process, that the community engagement needs to be earlier in the process before any votes for contractor selections have been taken place, thereby avoiding unnecessary costs should community or other feedback influence the direction of a proposed project. I feel that because of contracts have already been signed, that they're trying to find a way to approve the Alva school, knowing this is not a good spend for $7 million. I continue to hear no discussion about school placement in the South in Lee High Acres, which is our school desert. Second, I've heard no discussion on the continued overspending of the $200 million on current projects. So I ask this board to consider a few questions. How can one decide to spend more when current projects are clearly out of control? What actions does this board and the superintendent take to recoup any of the 200-plus million dollars in cost overruns from contractors? Is this board being good stewards of taxpayer dollars? Is the superintendent demonstrating fiscal responsibility? Will this board or superintendent provide a more detailed explanation of cost overruns to the public and investigate these cost overruns prior to the approval of new spending? What assurances are in place that future projects will not have cost overruns? What are our lessons learned from this process? I would lean hard on this board to really think about current project overruns prior to approving spend for new schools, especially the proposed schools in Alva. The degree of cost variance to the original cost is unacceptable, and cost overruns clearly do not demonstrate fiscal responsibility, regardless of projected growth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Todd Duzenberry. I'm a 20-year veteran Lee County teacher, and I'd like to start out by saying, as a Lee County teacher, I deserve a livable wage. If I heard right, in a board meeting recently, the district had mentioned building houses for teachers. This is not a fix. A livable wage is a fix. At the last Spock bargaining meeting, Mr. Dotick stated Lee County is at a disadvantage to other counties because of property tax. Why can't we not also do this and include impact fees that went away back in 2010? This should be done immediately. Do we really need the half-set sales tax for buildings if we can't hire and keep enough employees? Why not use this for wages? Each day, a teacher can't afford gas to get to work, put food on the table, or pay rent. Not a good look for a district, but the district has money that has not been spent on wages from last budget, which was discussed yesterday in bargaining, all while teachers and staff suffer. How is this a world-class school system when you cannot pay your teachers a livable wage? Loan repayment is starting up again, and teachers will go into default. A lot of teachers are maxing out credit cards right now to make ends meet. What happens to wages for teachers, vacancies, and recovery? What happens to that money? Supplements that are not used. We found out yesterday in bargaining. It's put back in the general budget or put in reserves. When a half-set sales tax went through, and this was addressed to teachers, we were led to believe wages would go up as money could be moved around. Where's that at? What is it going to take before the district does the right thing and increases wages beyond the cost of living each year, which we have not even come close to in the 20 years I've been here? We need a 20% increase right now for teachers to continue to live in Lee County. How much is spent on recruiting new teachers from other countries? And then I went on YouTube and I watched the Spock bargaining, and it came out to 32 cents an hour raise for every Spock member. There's no way they can continue to afford to live here with that. Now I hear we're using TAP services to supply needed help. What is the cost for that? I'm sure it's more than my hourly rate. What are we going to do in Lee County to keep our teachers that we have?
Hello. My name is Jessie Smith, and I have worked as a teacher at Gateway Elementary School for the past 11 years. Every year seems to get harder than the last. At our school in particular, we are short-staffed. We have 5th grade classes with 35 students because they can't find a long-term sub. We have 4th grade classes with 30 students because a teacher quit and there is no one to take their place. We have two pre-K special needs classrooms combined into one class with 24 students, the teacher running around like crazy, feeling like she can't even use the bathroom. There is no sub to cover the other class. We have had janitors leave because they get paid more working elsewhere. We are down paras because they can get paid more doing easier work elsewhere, too. We have secretaries running around covering lunch duty and watching students who are removed from classrooms because there is no one to help. Teachers are stressed to the max with more ridiculous things to do, like common boards and labeling books that you have taken out of our room and we have had forever, and you have given us new books that need to be sorted and labeled. Paperwork is piling up, meetings every second of the day and after school, parents to deal with on top of all of that, and still trying to figure out how to break up classrooms full of students where teachers are out sick and there is no sub to cover at a moment's notice. We had a 2nd grade class today with 30 students in their room. This happens every day in our school and schools around the district. This is unfair. All of us running around, bending over backwards, trying to make it all work to keep the students safe and learning, struggling to put food on the table and give our blood, sweat, and tears, taking away from our families and pets, and to not even get paid a decent wage or get money to do the extra work. Then at last night at bargaining, it was brought to our attention that you have been hoarding a large sum of money for a rainy day. How dare you? I told you last time I was here, Laura would quit, and if you don't pay us and start respecting us, there will be none of us left, and no one is coming to fill our positions. You want to build new schools? Well, you need teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, subs, custodians, and more. I'm here to tell you, it's time to break into that rainy day fund, because this isn't a drizzle. This is a monsoon, and your Lee County employees deserve a livable wage. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Bobby DeLisandro, Dr. Paula Porter, Laura White, Marge Cox, Tara Jenner.
Robert Daniels. Not everybody was here for the previous meeting. I understand your assurances, and as I opened last time, I recognize the problem with the teachers' wages is an inherited problem from previous boards, and it may not even be resolved by this board or the next board, and it's an ongoing process. I'd also like to express that I'm not dim. I know that the money is in different pools, and the pools cannot touch or be moved around. But what I am asking is that we play it straight at least. You know, if the money that is assigned to instruction last year was spent on something else, it should be a simple answer of, no, that $33.9 million that was in that instructional fund that did not go to teacher wages because of vacancies was spent on this instead. That money's not there anymore. It's not available. Take the kink those off. Just talk it straight. You can't talk about bargaining, but I also know you're at the head of an immense, immense system that's going on. And I would be more reassured if evidence of fiscal mismanagement was not readily available at every information request. I've seen papers floating around of receipts for work done by locksmiths to the school, where $38,000 was paid for a spreadsheet multiple times. I mean, I'll do a pivot table for you for a tenth of that. I could use the money. I'll even come by and I'll do the locks, probably at a higher quality for half the money and make more than I'll make probably in the next 10 years teaching. We were told a couple meetings ago that there's $6 billion needed for 16 new schools. Where are we going to find the 1,200 staff members to work those schools when we can't even hit replacement value? We were told yesterday that there were 200 empty vacancies for teachers. I checked, it's 241. We're off by 20%. 41 might not sound like a huge number, but 241 people? I only have 42 teachers working with me at my school. So it sounds to me like that's multiple schools empty. If we're at 95%, teacher rate, you know, employment, that's 5,000 students that don't have a teacher or are being shuffled around, as the previous speaker has mentioned. This does have to be fixed as soon as possible for the well-being of the students. Going back to the 16 new schools, that's $6 billion. That's $375 million per school. What are we building these schools out of? That's a ridiculous sum of money per school. Are the halls going to be gilded in gold and silver for them? How big are these schools going to be? It seems like a ridiculous amount of money, especially when the last school that we talked about rebuilding down at the beach was going to be 150 to rebuild it bigger and better than before. Again, there's all this money, and we just have these questions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Madeline Stewart. I want to talk about trust and respect for professional educators. Those of us who have been attending board workshops, briefings, and action meetings over the last months have heard board members voice their concern that they will be liable if an inappropriate book is discovered in one of the school or classroom libraries by a parent or community member. The board members were concerned about legal action against them. We learned that the restrictive media processes put in place by the board would insulate, protect the school board from legal action. Now it is time for all of you on the dais to turn your attention to the protection of the district's professionals who are working to educate students every day. The purple group is concerned about the morale of building principals and classroom teachers. We've just heard some horrific stories. As they begin a new year with the political culture wars raging, according to, still raging, according to a report on July 26, the entire district has gone through and removed educational materials that do not meet the new standards defined by the legislature. Everyone is following the law. So now is the time for all of you to speak out clearly and publicly to assure all the educators in the district that you have their back, that you protect them, and they don't have to be afraid of reprisals from outside political forces, that you recognize, respect, and support their professional work, that you trust them to use their knowledge and expertise to make the best educational decisions for teaching and learning every day. We trust and support the educational professionals. We ask all of you to demonstrate in word and action that you do, too. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board and superintendent and attorney. My name is Bobby DeLisandro for former superintendent in Lee and Cambridge, Massachusetts. I think we've all heard questions tonight about what are the funds being used for that have not been expended for the teacher vacancies. As a former superintendent, I understand the limitations to budget, but I think it's important to note that some other districts are finding ways to take those funds and divert them back to the teachers. And I really respectfully request that you look into some of those options as our And I really respectfully request that you look into some of those options as our teachers really deserve all the help and support we can give them. Thank you very much.
My name is Laura White. You are men and women of integrity, value, and honesty, and I know that you strive to do what is best for children, but I ask that you please do what is best for teachers and support staff. I love teaching at my school, but the cost of living is pricing me out of the school district. I have completed my 22nd year with Lee County. I have a master's and I'm struggling financially. My property taxes have gone up, my homeowner's insurance, my FPL, my cable, my internet, my car insurance bills have all gone up even though all my contracts have remained the same with these companies. In addition to the food and gas, my pay rate can't keep up even though I just received that longevity raise. So using that 50-30-20 method for budgeting, which I have my whole life, 50% for basic needs, 30 for wants, and 20 for savings, about 75% of my budget is for basic needs and the other part is for stuff like car repairs, new tires, vet bills, new eyeglasses, contacts for my family, a crown for my tooth, new sneakers for my kids. I have almost spent all my savings due to inflation and I have minimal left for emergencies. My financial advisor just told me this summer that I'm not going to be able to retire when I have 30 years in teaching because my basic need expenses are too high for my family of four and my salary for my top five years is projected to be too low. So I found myself taking jobs this past school year to take on extra jobs. Now the SGA advisor for an extra $15 a week. I subbing classrooms for extra pay. I'm a ticket taker for sports events for an extra $30. I do art club. It's exhausting and these supplements are really pitiful. I make a $30 flat fee for the ticket taker and I can only do it like once a month if I'm lucky because of my kids. The art club has multiple commitments and we have two advisors for, to share our $400 supplement because there's so many district and community events that we are expected to participate in and we want to do it for the kids. So I get $200 for the whole year. That's an extra $8.33 every two weeks and we have art club every week for one and a half hours, basically $2.77 an hour. No one in the building wants these supplements or these coaching positions because we're tired and the money does not make it worth it. Doing it for the kids isn't good enough anymore and I'm cutting down my time commitment. I'm a professional and should be compensated accordingly for my base salary and my supplements. Years passed, the millage was passed, and we were told that they would stop taking from the teachers pot of money for operations and that's how we would get that big raise.
But since 2001, where did that money go?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Paula Porter. I am a professor of education. I teach students at the masters and doctoral level to continue their education. We all know it's difficult to recruit and retain teachers. This is across the country. My students tell me this all the time. Florida ranks 48th in the country in teacher pay, but while paying teachers a living wage is vital, we do have other elements that keep passionate teachers in the classroom. First and foremost, supporting teachers as a school board is also important and this can be done with an acronym of TRUST. The first T stands for transparency. It's the duty of all of us in the community to ensure open and transparent communication with teachers about policies and even more importantly, budget and pay. The R stands for resources. As noted in a recent NEA report, teachers on average across the country buy $800 worth of materials for their classrooms. Without teaching materials and adequate technology, we cannot empower them to excel on their jobs engaging student learning. The U is for understanding of the challenges and needs of our teachers. You've heard them here tonight. There are several ways to engage the faculty, not only through public comments here, but try reaching out to the teachers as a group about their issues and not just during union negotiations going on at this time. Ask them, they'll tell you. As for the S, we want to support the teachers in their jobs in the classroom. We can offer mentoring programs, especially with so many new teachers who may not have their certifications, as well as provide wellness initiatives to help them manage their workload, communicate clearly with parents and students, and address professional challenges. Finally, the second T in TRUST stands for training and professional development. Not only do your new and inexperienced faculty need ongoing workshops, seminars, professional development, but so do all your faculty. I did a whole year of theme using the book Teach Like a Pirate under another acronym with college faculty and by the end of the year, we had built a climate of cross-pollination, collaboration, and cooperation among faculty, staff, and administrators. It was a wonderful thing to watch these people grow and change. Trust between the school board and educators is essential for a successful and collaborative environment that supports all student learning. Thank you.
I'm Marge Cox. I live in Bonita Springs. I served in public education for 40 years, both in Indiana and it's part of it in Florida. And I just come tonight to say I know how important school board support was to me when I was serving as a public educator and how important the superintendent was in terms of what we were able to accomplish. And I just want to encourage you to give all the support you can to our professional staff. My heart breaks for them as I hear their stories and see articles in the newspaper. We all need to do what we can for our kids. That's why I got into education. That's why I think any teacher gets into education because you want to make a difference in kids' lives. We need to help them to do that and we need to let them know that they are supported and loved as professional educators. And I just ask you to make that so clear to them that they can't possibly miss it because you are key to that. Even though you're not in a classroom, you're key to what happens as school board and superintendent. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Will the following individuals please line up? Ray Klassen, Sergio Cruz, CJ Talker, Shirley Chapman, Robert Kohler.
One of the hardest parts for me coming to the school board meetings is the fact that my favorite color is purple and that number has been co-opted by a particular group of people that espouse a certain political or social agenda. So I just want to preface my comments by saying I'm wearing purple because it's my favorite color, not because I affiliate with any other groups here that have co-opted that color here in the school district. I've been hearing so much about teachers not being paid enough, not having enough teachers, not enough having enough subs, and I have spoken directly with a number of people that have moved to Lee County within the last six years and they wanted to apply as substitute teachers, but they're being required to pay for the fingerprinting before they can even see what's on the website as available options available for them. Seriously, I encourage you to look into that to see whether there's an issue there. This is a problem. If you can't afford a couple of bucks here or there in order to give these people easy access to the website that even lets them know whether there's even a job within their field of expertise or where they'd be comfortable working and all, you've got a bigger problem than you think. So I'm going to encourage you to look into that and waive that cost and absorb it by the district so that you can get those substitute teachers in in order to give a little bit of a break to these teachers that are working so hard and the ones that actually are having to hold the fort down that are substitutes. The other thing I'd like to comment, and I'm just going to throw this out there one more time, whenever I come into these meetings, I have to go through now a nice metal detector. And I've been told over and over again, hey, you got to go through this when you go to a sporting event. Well, guess what? I don't have a right to petition my government for a redress of grievances at a sporting event and I don't have a right to instruct my representatives at a sporting event, but I do here at this meeting. I've been in other areas of this building for other discussions with individuals, both those on the dais as well as other people in this building. I never have to go through it. And I've been told, oh, there's credible threats. This has been going on for several years. I know that you would like to say that there are security reasons why you can't share with me the details of that, but I would at least like to know how many times those credible threats have been addressed and what the resolution is, whether anybody's been found responsible for anything that was a threat and if so, what did you do about it? And if you didn't do anything about it, does that mean that there wasn't really a threat there in the first place? I just would like to know that because I resent having to give up my rights protected under the Fourth Amendment in order to assert my rights protected by the First Amendment. Thank you.
My name is Ray Klassen and I live in North Fort Myers. Before retiring in 2011, I taught language arts at Cape Coral High School. My three children attended Lee County schools and I now have five grandchildren attending district schools. I'm here because I'm concerned for their future. Quite frankly, I'm worried. The first issue I'd like to bring up concerns staff shortages. I've been hearing horror stories from teacher friends about staff shortages at their schools. To see for myself, I went to the district website to check out the listings for instructional vacancies. The sheer number of vacancies is truly shocking. As a former language arts teacher, I was particularly dismayed to see at least one language arts vacancy in almost every middle and high school in the district. But I'll tell you, I cannot speak to the subject of teacher shortages more eloquently than a teacher right behind me did a couple of minutes ago. But as far as recruitment and retention of teachers is concerned, does the board really believe that such policies as the Media Access Forum and the puritanical vetting of classroom library titles will attract new teachers to our county and encourage those we already have to stay here? My second issue concerns classroom libraries. A friend of mine, an elementary school teacher, has close to 200 books in her classroom library. She submitted her titles for review in a timely manner. To date, only a half a dozen of her titles have been approved, which means that three weeks into the school year, she has no classroom library to offer her students. I have no doubt that many other teachers find themselves in a similar situation. I hope you agree that this state of affairs is unacceptable. I'd like to see the evidence that shows children are harmed in some way in the absence of these policies. As a former language arts teacher, I regularly taught Lord of the Flies, George Orwell's 1984, Shakespeare's Romeo and Juliet, the full play, the full play, not excerpts. And where were the complaints? Where were the challenges to those materials? I never had a single complaint from a parent or student. Thank you.
Hope to bring a positive note to tonight's meeting. My name is Sergio Cruz and I'm a father and ESC advocate and champion. And I want to start by thanking the superintendent and his chief of staff for meeting with me over the summer. I hope that the meeting proves fruitful and the changes, events, and ideals discussed lead to a collaborative partnership. Although cognizant of my infancy in ESC advocacy, I often find myself facing the same question time and time again from other advocates, parents, teachers, therapists, and administrators, the simple yet meaningful question of why? What is my why? What sparked this journey? What flipped this switch to devote my life to this cause? Despite the obvious of my personal connection to this community through my son, there was also a core belief and ideology that I truly believe in, the cardinal principle of uplift, to lift as I climb. And in order to continue to fill my wealth of knowledge or enlightenment, I must pour into others to make room. And if you know better, you do better and you should share that with others. So when I've shared my why with others, I've often found myself quoting one of my favorite poems. This particular poem I learned nearly 20 years ago and it's stuck with me ever since. I believe it embodies or at the minimum seconded my why. And since I've been encouraged to share this with the district, I hope that those who are searching, those who have their ear to the floor and who are on their own personal advocacy journey, that they find hope and encouragement from this poem. I know it's not everybody's cup of tea to hear a poem after you get off work or at one of these meetings, but I promise it'll be brief and if you bear with me, I'll try to bring as much spirit and enthusiasm to it as I can. The poem is Bridge Builder by Will Allen Drummel. "An old man going a lone highway Came at the evening, cold and gray, To a chasm vast and deep and wide Through which was flowing a sullen tide. The old man crossed in the twilight dam The sullen stream had no fears for him; But he turned when safe on the other side And built a bridge to span the tide. 'Old man,' said a fellow pilgrim near, 'You're wasting your strength with building here. Your journey will end with the ending day. You never again will pass this way. You've crossed the chasm, deep and wide. Why build this bridge at even tide?' The builder lifted his old gray head, 'Good friend, in the path I have come,' he said. There followed after me today A youth whose feet must pass this way. This chasm that has been as not to me To that fair-haired youth may a pitfall be. He too must cross in the twilight dam. Good friend, I am building this bridge for him.' Thank you."
My name is Si Tuckert. My first time being here and I do not know the limits of your power, so sorry for the full context, but I would like to say, number one, I would just like to put my input in for tonight and I hope there are, my words are not like tears in the rain, rather they become brown splotches on top of ceilings that exist there longer than the students go to class. My first point would be that I do not disagree or I do not grieve the banning of books. I believe that they, the material should be allowed for anyone to, just to read and have. It just doesn't make any sense to me why to dull the kids' minds and stuff. I feel like they should have their eyes open to just the large perspectives there is in the world, just the truths of reality that sometimes it's just difficult, you go through difficult situations. I feel like books help comfort and ready young minds. And my second point would be, like I said, I don't know your full power, but I'd like to put more money, more spending towards the teachers as I've seen the schools and that, their states are usually dilapidated and usually they don't have enough funding to keep enough teachers. A lot of teachers will leave and that to get, find better jobs throughout the year. And a good example as well is my mother, she taught kids with severe behavioral issues and the school offered her little to no help, usually like two classes spanning these kids out, but she had to teach multiple grades and every day, like time after time, she'd come home crying and that because she just did not get enough support and funding to help be able to teach these kids in this environment. So thank you for listening. Have a great day.
I'm ready. So go ahead and start the clock. Thank you. Hello, it's me again. Now, I didn't bring a poem or anything, but now that we have a little bit more people in the room, I can go ahead and be a bit more specific about my background. I have worked for FEMA, I've worked for the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Justice and their psychological services, which if you know anything about Florida, we kept our hands busy. So, one thing that all of this experience has given me is that it's given me a keen eye for seeing crisis occurring. Now, a lot of the horror stories that we've heard last night, I would like to say, well, don't sell the position of teacher any harder, otherwise we'll have no open spots. Simply put, there's a lot of horror stories coming out about apparent struggles of teachers. Well, those sorts of words get around and when they do get around, especially in the age of information that we live in today, what happens is, is people hear that, they divert themselves away into other professions. So your pool of available candidates gets smaller with every single complaint that comes out about teachers talking about their livable wages or rather unlivable wages. Now, again, I actually, perhaps in my own naivety- Now, again, I actually, perhaps in my own naivety, trust members of this board that you are working to do the correct thing, and we will support you in that, or at least I will. And I will try to get my friends to do so as well. But, the problem is that I can see a crisis coming, and the crisis is that we're already short-staffed. And for every person who gets up in front of the podium, goes online, makes a video, tells their friends about their apparent living struggles, you're going to see the prospect of being a teacher become less and less appealing. It's a bit of a long path to eventually becoming a teacher, your degree, all the certifications. And it takes a lot of very conscious and indeed consistent effort in order to get to that position. You're going to see fewer and fewer people walking that path the longer this problem goes on. So while you may think that you have time, you may actually have less time than you think to solve this issue before it reaches a critical tipping point. It's called a cascading failure, and it happens to many businesses and indeed government organizations when they try to fix a problem, but the problem is simply fixed too slow to get everybody back in. Remember, you're not just appealing to your candidates that you have now, you're appealing to the future teacher candidates as well, who need to hear that the problem is being fixed, not just from you, not just from you fine people of the board, but also from the teachers themselves. So, that is all, and I'm going to yield the remaining 10 seconds or so of my time, and I hope you all have a good day.
Chair, could you ask for the speaker to state his name?
Please, sorry. This is Robert Kohler again. I said it earlier. So have a good night, everybody.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Chapman. I was thinking of a couple of things as I walked up here. One is, anything worth doing is worth doing well. And the second, I thought about some of the years that I taught at Franklin Park Elementary back in the 80s. I had students, I was teaching fifth grade, and I had students walk in the classroom reading on a second-grade level. And I said to them, if you're at school every day, and I'm here, and I'm your teacher, there's no way you're going to fail. You put forth the effort, because if you're failing, it's my fault. Now, I realize that times are difficult, monies are difficult. And during that time, I remember the one year I had 38 students in my fifth-grade class, and I didn't have an assistant of any kind, but I didn't complain about that. I looked at ways that we could reach children. And I think that if every teacher would decide to do all that they can do and realize when the testing time comes and their students are not doing well, they need to take a look in the mirror and not think it's just, well, I'm not getting enough money. If you do the right thing, things are going to get better. And I'm just, I came up here actually to tell you, we need a middle school in the Dunbar community. But I went to thinking about some things that has happened. Franklin Park used to be a middle school. Jane Stephens used to be a middle school. They're both now elementary schools. But sometimes you have to do what you have to do until you can do better. So I think if we would try not to complain as much and look at ways that we can impact and make a difference, I mean, if you're good, if you're good at what you do, you need to prove it and see that everything will work out all right. So I'm hoping that we eventually will get a middle school in the Dunbar, Slice, Tice community, because we do need a middle school. And you all have a great day.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Dr. Munir, do you have any comments at this time or for later?
I think it would be wise for us to make some comment, especially to our public educators and our staff that are present today. When you put at your core value taking care of students, you must place taking care of your employees at the same core value level. It's inextricably bound. Student achievement is related to good quality teachers being in the classroom. The research is clear. Second only to a great leader in a school building. Teachers have the greatest impact when they close their door and go to work. I will share with you that this board has made a commitment this year, going into bargaining, to provide as many dollars as we could find together to put on the table for our employees. We have some work to do. Now that the final budget has been approved, I will ask Ms. Desmore to take a deeper dive and a harder look. I can't speak to, you know, $39.9 million. I've watched the bargaining session myself already, and will make sure that I have the appropriate questioning. But this school district, since my arrival, has committed not only to a livable wage and trying to continue to put money into teachers and all employees' pockets, but they have also taken the hard $19 million bite on insurance and insurance inflation, which they have not passed on to their employees, which they could have simply done this year. We could have made those bills even worse. But is there still work to be done? Of course there's still work to be done. So we will continue to, in our bargaining sessions, bargain with our unions and make some determinations about how we can move forward, and look at all available funding. There was a request last night made that I think we'd have to go back into an executive session to have a conversation about. In terms of capital dollars and overruns, I'll have a conversation with our chief operations officer, Scott. Rick and Barker is here quite often to go over each construction project, how they're doing, how they're staying within budget, if there's any been money to be found. And quite honestly, most times, he talks about refunds back to the district and ensuring that those dollars are well spent. In terms of classroom libraries, I've already had a text conversation with a member of my staff. There are 10 certified media specialists in our community. We have really great retired media specialists who come up and speak to us. But let's be candid about the number that we have, because a number of administrations ago, a decision was made that media specialists were hard to find. They are hard to find. Great teachers are always hard to find. But if you don't look for them, you'll never find one. So we are working with our site-based budget models and our teams to bring back the expectation that our schools will have certified media specialists. But those 10 media specialists we have are moving through the books in all classroom libraries as quickly as possible. Have there been delays? Of course. Teachers, myself included, have huge classroom libraries. It's what we do. Every time we see a book, or we're at a yard sale, or we're at Goodwill, or somewhere, we buy another book to add to our classroom shelf because we know, deep in our hearts, that what will make a difference in a student's life is that first book that hooks them. There is no one in this room that reads and reads voraciously that can't remember the first title of the book that hooked you into reading. That's why teachers do what they do. I lastly wanted to just say, I'm going to end with the poem. It's one of actually my favorites. The main theme of this piece of work is about hard work, perseverance, confidence, and generosity. Considering the words of the poem and the process of paying forward, that's what great educators and the people who work in the education profession, whether they be paraprofessionals, bus drivers, other Spalk employees, administrators, Schedule N, and even district-level administrators, we work because of hard work, perseverance, confidence, generosity, and paying it forward. I'm hearing you that you're tired of paying it forward. Not that you're tired of paying it forward to your students, but you'd like to make sure that someone's paying you. Our board has said that they support that, and we will continue to do what we can do within a balanced budget required by the state. And I would ask just a simple, open-ended question, rhetorical in nature. If Florida is 48th in the country, this is not a Lee County problem, or just a Lee County problem. So we have additional work, and we were discussing our legislative platform earlier today. Lastly, on behalf of our legal team, yes, our legal team and this board has set up policies to protect our students, but I will assure you that part of what we are setting up is an opportunity to ensure we're protecting the licenses that are represented in this room of our fabulous public educators. We have to make sure we're protecting them as well, and that is partially sometimes why we have to do what we have to do in the midst of what could be a career-ending move that could be completely unintentional. So we want to protect our teachers, we want to support them, and I look forward to the bargaining process continuing to work forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for those comments. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days before the board meeting. We are expected to review all material, and we have had an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding these recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board before appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion? Mr. Fisher?
No items.
Mrs. Jevon Ali?
I have none, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with these, as presented tonight? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second, Ms. Jevon Ali. Would you please record your vote? Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Munir, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that was approved tonight?
I'm honored to do so. With changes of assignment, I'd like to recognize Jeremy Schwinghammer. He is going to be joining the family at Bonita Springs Middle School Center for the Arts as an assistant principal. Also with a change in assignment, Amy Koenig is joining the Curriculum Instruction and Innovation for secondary schools as the coordinator of teaching and learning. Dennis Eads was unable to attend. He will be joining Southwest Florida Public Service Academy as the associate director for public service programs. Also unable to attend tonight was Christina Morgan. She will be joining the Curriculum Instruction Innovation Division in the high school area as our new coordinator of graduation. Barbara Moreland should be here. She is going to be the new assistant principal at Lemuel Teal Middle School. Samantha Gibbs also should be here this evening. We're proud of Samantha. Assistant principal at Sunshine Elementary. Lastly, but not least, I would like to recognize Angel Gomez. He will be taking on the Chief of Communications and Government Relations Officer beginning as early as next week. I'd like to thank Mr. Gomez and welcome him to our team as well. Mr. Chairman, before I ask for the favor that you always provide me to allow these wonderful people and their families to go out and have an opportunity to celebrate, I just want to remind everybody that if you received an appointment or transfer this evening, it is really a symbol of this board's trust. And when I talk about trust with all of you, I also talk about the level of responsibility that's entailed, especially if you're school-based, working with our young people each and every day. It's incredibly important that you absorb and understand that level of trust and the level of responsibility that accompanies it. Without moving any further from the people surrounding you, though, thank you to the families and to the friends who are surrounding you this evening, including your school families that are with you, because understand that help and support comes to you each and every day through those wonderful individuals. And just want to take an opportunity, as maybe the chairman gives you an opportunity to leave, to recognize those individuals who you brought with you tonight, because they are part of a huge support system. And your candidate who stood up this evening will need you. At some point in this process, they are going to need your help and support. I'm deeply grateful for the moment that you provided to them. So congratulations again to all the appointees this evening.
If you would like to leave, you may at this time. We'll take a moment, pause here. A lot of y'all have to be at school early tomorrow morning. Don't be late. On June 27, 2023, I made a motion, which was seconded by Mrs. Langford Fleming, to create a new board advocacy position and an alternate to be named Southwest Florida Legislative Liaison. Thereafter, the motion was properly tabled per Robert's rule. Board members, is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
I move that the item be removed from the table.
Okay, is there a second? Seeing no second, this item will not be removed from the table and will be dismissed, removed, forever. Thank you.
Forever.
Forever. Last is our good of the order and other business, board members' comments. We'll start with Ms. Morgan this time. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I have none. Thank you. Oh, that's not true, actually. Normally, I wouldn't at this time, but I really feel like I do need to respond to some of the comments that were made about teachers and concern about what's being asked of them. And I do want to say that, you know, I acknowledge, we all acknowledge, that this legislative session made it, we had a lot of work to do, and that work became your work. And we have heard the numbers of hours that people have spent screening the books. We know it is an onerous task that you've been given. We regret that you had to start the school year this way, and I think the superintendent said it correctly, that what we have done in policy in response to the legislature is to protect teachers' licenses, to protect teachers from challenges that would threaten their positions in the classroom. We, I absolutely, and I know my colleagues will say exactly the same thing, we trust and respect what you're doing in the classroom. Our goal is to protect you. And secondarily, I do want to say that we- the classroom. Our goal is to protect you. And secondarily, I do want to say that we are concerned about teacher compensation. We talk about it all the time. We have looked at budgets. We have scraped money. The, and I don't know, actually, I can't say anything more than that because we are in negotiations. I just want you to know that we do hear you. We have talked about things that that might be appropriate remedies, but that's for future conversations. And that's all I will say. Thank you very much.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I sort of reiterate what Ms. Morgan just stated, that teacher pay and teacher salary along with bus drivers and substitutes and cafeteria workers and all support staff is really top of mind. And we, like you said, we can't say much about it. But we know, or I know for certain, that when you have quality educators in a classroom, then our children and our families are getting the best that they deserve, and they deserve the best. And when we have those quality educators in the room, we are fulfilling the mission of what a school board has really set out to do. And that's to give children the best education that we can possibly give them. And I know that we have, I would put many of our educators, you know, at the top in the state of Florida. And I have confidence that we're going to be able to to make some headway there this year. Thank you to all the speakers. I'm so glad that you feel confident and comfortable enough to come and share your thoughts. Mr. Daniels is always so respectful when he comes with his study guide of all of the things that he brings to the table. And I truly appreciate all of his efforts there. I, Mr. Cruz, every time you come here, I'm enlightened by something else. So I appreciate you as well. Mrs. Chapman, thank you for bringing up the Dunbar community once again. You are not forgotten. One of my, you know, I'm from the eastern part of this of this county and a little further out. So I completely understand the need and where your heart's at in the in that part of our of our district. You know, you read Mr. Chairperson's at the beginning. I can't remember what we called them, all the acknowledgements for the month of September. And the one thing that wasn't listed is September 11, which is coming up on Monday. And as you're reading through that, I thought to myself, I know where I was. I had 32 students in a third grade classroom when I got the phone call that something was going on. And I'll never forget those faces and just trying to reassure them that they were all going to get home safely that day. I'm sorry. That morning, we all woke up and headed to work, and we were on our own paths, doing our own thing, coming from different walks of life. But by that evening, we were all one united America. And it's just inspiring. And I try to take myself back to that evening. We were all Americans by the end of that afternoon, helping one another, calling people, checking on them. And I look forward to a time like that without a horrific event to get us there to that point. But I'm excited, and I'm incredibly honored to be able to speak at Dunbar Middle this Monday to a group of students about where I was on September 11. And hopefully, some of you board members are able to do the same in some of our schools. Those are all the comments I have tonight.
Ms. Jordan, thank you for that.
I'll have to go after that. Yeah, I remember I was at too. So I was going to say ditto on what, I was going to use your words on what Ms. Morgan had said. And I know a lot of times we say that we hear you, we trust you, we care. And it's just words to a lot of people. But it is really true to myself, and I'm sure to my colleagues as well, we do care. And we do say that. And I know how hard it is for people right now. And even in the hospitality industry, which I am in, we have employees that are living in cars. It's just, time is really, it's really a rough time right now for people. So I do appreciate each and every one of you that that come to work every day and to take care of our children and to teach them. I have many grandchildren in the district, and I know that they are coming home, learning, and, you know, just and growing. So I do appreciate that. Dr. Chapman, always good seeing you. Yes, it used to be Lee Middle, then it was James Stevens. But yes, we, I hear you loud and clear. And I know Ms. Ware is here as well, and she's spoken on that as well, about the middle school. So I, we, I hear you, and I understand where you're coming from on that. And just thank you to all the people who came to speak today. I always appreciate listening to what you all have to say, because it means a lot to me. And I wanted to congratulate all the individuals who joined the district or have been reassigned. Thank you again for everything that you do. And CJ, the student who I believe was a student who came up and spoke, I always appreciate when our students have something to share, and especially when it's about books, because I believe that every child should have a book in their hand. So thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I remember my first book, but I'm not going to tell you the title because it wasn't deep or anything other than entertaining. I am not going to repeat my comments from earlier today. I spoke twice on teacher pay, and I think I did it with passion. And I think this whole board supports increases. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jevon Ali?
I just have a couple of things. I think tonight we approved the calendar. And I had a parent contact me and say that if we could do it like an update on the bottom of it, because apparently that calendar circles around and with the the calendar update regarding the hurricane makeup days, it kind of changes. If that could, somehow, if they could have that date, you know what I'm saying, where it's just updated and changed, is, please? Because I had somebody contact me about regarding that. So I said I'd mention it. And then, second of all, I actually went to, Dr. Chapman, I actually went to Lee Middle. And so I totally know that school well. And I understand where you're coming from. And thank you so much for just advocating for your community. And I just want to thank you for actually what you said regarding, you know, really, our district is only as good as the board that governs it. And so we all have to look in the mirror sometimes. And so I hope that this is not tears in the rain that somebody mentioned tonight. I really thought about that, because sometimes we get a lot of rain in Florida, and it just swallows us up sometimes. And we can't, we can't let that happen. So I'm committed to making sure that teachers receive a raise, not just a bonus. Before we ask to increase taxes, though, we need to look and see about having a forensic audit, because the community does not have our trust. And this is to gain trust. Trust was talked about tonight, and I think trust is really a big deal. And in order to do that, we have to remain committed to gain back the trust of our community. And by doing that, I think a forensic audit will do that because it's going to show that we are committed as a board. And I just want to say that I remain committed, and I hope, and I look forward to finding the dollars to make our teachers, to help them stay in Lee County. I understand, it's very difficult. It is a very difficult time right now. And sustainability is huge, and they're struggling to do so. So again, I remain committed to making sure that our teachers are living a comfortable life. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Okay. Thank you. It's a little easier to go at the end, I've noticed. I appreciate that. So I echo everyone's sentiments up here. One thing I want to point out is I want to thank the citizens that have stepped up to serve on our board advisory committees. I thank you for your service. We all really, truly appreciate that. In regards to the teachers, we have your backs. There's a reason, as I said, I, you know, I chose to put my kids in the school district of Lee County, and I have your backs. I know this board does. So, and it means a lot to me for all of you do. We've all talked about pay, and we've talked about bargaining. All I can say is, you know, we hear you, and we need to do better. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
This has been our fifth meeting of the day. And I hope the board indulged me, because under the good of the order, I'm going to make a motion. It's going to be a quick one, I believe. I would like to permanently add the 9/11 recognition to our recognitions for September.
I second.
Yes. All right. Can we, it'll be a roll call vote?
Yeah, but you need to.
Oh, yeah. Public comment. Any public comment on that? Seeing none? Discussion? Ms. Jevon?
I wanted to thank you, actually, for saying that, Ms. Fleming. So thank you. Yes. My, Ms. Warren.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Jevon Ali?
Aye.
Patrica?
Yes, please.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Passes unanimously. We add that every September. My first book was a series, The Hardy Boys. And they're in my office. That's how I remember them. Okay. Doctor, I'm sorry, Attorney Dupay?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Banier?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chair, that I think we should recognize. And another item on the special things for September was payroll. There's a miracle that occurs every two weeks in most of our lives. And you don't really recognize a team when everything works according to a plan. And when you look in your bank account on certain days, your money and your checks are there. I realize tonight we have found and learned a lesson, those checks might not be large enough. But I just want to recognize the hard work and the effort of the payroll team. They do untold work. They work very, very hard. And every time we change a contract, or we add a bonus, or we do something different, they have to retool their world and go to work and make it happen and make it happen in an accurate manner. So I just wanted to recognize the payroll team. Along with that, I want to sort of build off what Ms. Jordan said today. I had planned to say many thanks to our construction facilities and maintenance staff for their leadership, both pre and post-storm. There's a lot of work to be done to make sure buildings were secure. And while Adalia was no Ian for us, buildings still have to be assessed post-storm. They still have to be keyed into. They still have to be walked. And I appreciate the leadership of our chief operations officer, Larry Stevens, and all the team that he represents, who walked those buildings and ensured that they would be in good shape. And despite the fact we told our principals to stay home, they went out and checked anyway, which is what good principals do do. So I want to recognize their leadership as well. Reminder to the community that the Lee Listens Project, which was preempted by the storm, has been rescheduled for September 27, 2023. I'm also excited about an advisory council that came into being again last night, and that is the superintendent's advisory council. We had a great turnout. They worked very, very hard to elect their leadership. And I look forward to working with them in the days in the days to come. I would also like to just take the opportunity to let the community know that we have been working very hard with Dixie, Taylor, and Levy Counties. They were significant ground zero for this particular storm, but a very different type of damage. The good news is most of their buildings are fine, and they, the repairs will be minimal if there are repairs needed at all. And as electricity has been restored, some of them went back as early as yesterday. And I think believe all of the, all of those three counties will have schools open by tomorrow. They had their teachers back today, and they'll all be reopened by tomorrow. So fantastic work by those superintendents. They have not yet reached out, other than to have multiple phone conversations about FEMA and other things. They've not reached out for things from our county. But I suspect if they do, I know our team was ready to respond over the weekend. Lastly, I just want to say to the community, because it came up in the meeting that we had, one of the meetings we had previously, I can't even tell you which one anymore. But we are working through our transportation issues. I've been meeting weekly with the director of transportation and the chief operations officer. We have provided the beginnings of tracking spreadsheets for, that'll be produced on a weekly basis. We're expanding those into specific tables so that we can get more accurate and drill down on where we are, where we are working and where we are falling short. And earlier this morning, it's very early in the morning when I met with our director of transportation, CLO, I directed our director of transportation to reach out to our nonprofits. Those would be the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, the Q, and the STAR program, to ensure them that the community busing that comes from the local proximity zone, those buses that normally run to and by those organizations, we will be extending or revising routes. We will make sure that the children gets get stops near their home. But if there are students remaining that need to be dropped at those, those locations, they will be for at least this year. We were very clear that it may take a change in the business model moving forward. But we believe after trimming out 15,000 miles, we could put a few more miles in and not overly impact what is can be a delayed system, both in the morning and the afternoon. And if anybody is saying prayers, just say some prayers for lightning and rainstorms to go away between the hours of 1:00 and 4:00. I know, good luck. But it would really help us if we could get some clear days. We'd get a better understanding of where our schools are working and where our bus transportation is working and where it isn't. So look forward to keeping you updated on that particular issue as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have to share something because it's there with me to share it based on what Ms. Langford said. I was in Washington, DC as a practicing attorney on 9/11, very close to the Capitol and very close to the Supreme Court. I remember 9/11 vividly. And I remember seeing the hole in the Pentagon. And I also had family members who served in active duty as part of our mission in 9/11. So that hits me as well. And I think as remembering that we are a bridge because we are all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, September 13. There'll be a board workshop at 12:00 PM. On Tuesday, September 19, there'll be a board briefing at 1:00 PM and a board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business come before this body, and saying no objection, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:22 PM.